Large audience tonight.
Now you are.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie. Do we want to do a mic test first? I don't think we're yelling. I'm gonna run with it. Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on April 9th, 2024, at the Newton Town Hall at 7 o'clock. First, I would like to see the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have Ms. Barbara White remote on Zoom. I think that's everybody on Zoom tonight, Zoom members of the public. So. Okay, now the mics are working. They're a little bit louder. Do you want to turn me down, Jamie? Test, 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 test.
Yep.
I think we're all a little loud, but.
Yeah.
He corrected. So the first order of business is approval of the March 26, 2024 meeting minutes.
Motion to accept. Seconded.
Bob made the motion. Andrew seconded. Okay.
Ms. White?
She said aye, but Zoom audio is not quite.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristas?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Barbara, can you talk again? We're dealing with some audio issues. I'm not sure if you heard that.
I did hear everybody. Can you hear me?
We can.
Sure can.
Yes, again.
Well, we can.
Okay.
We're just taking care of this for the selectmen meeting this week. Whatever, whatever else is next.
Would you like to do the matter of the bonds?
Sure. It's not, was this on the agenda that was posted? This was not on the agenda tonight, correct?
Actually, it wasn't because it just came in tonight.
Yeah. So for 125 Development Corp., and this is for Phase 5, I believe? Is this, is that what we're calling it, Phase 5? We had two bonds that we were looking to approve. One was for site restoration for the amount of $137, 313 and 70 cents. And the other one was for a landscaping bond for $53,655 and 25 cents. Those were the amounts presented by the applicant's engineer, Jonesa Beach. We had our engineer take a look at those, KV Partners. And I'm not sure if there's any discussion from the board on those dollar amounts or approval. There is, the applicant is not in the room, just for the record. Jen, do you have any comments?
Just procedurally, the approval or conditional approval of that application was basically just getting to that final number. And getting to that final number was the applicant presenting their numbers, town engineer concurring with them, which he has done. So it does seem that the conditions have been met. Now, it's really just a matter of that number getting put into the final notice of decision.
Okay, so the board can't, do we have to agree to those numbers or?
I would just maybe a vote that you concur that that condition has been met.
Okay.
With the establishment of that bond amount. Just so it's on record that you have seen it, you concur that that condition has been met. They still have to issue the bond and everything, but.
Okay, so we really can't change those numbers at all?
No, unless you have a disagreement with them and want to go back to the town engineer with questions. If you need to think about it, since that just came in, if you had questions from the initial the applicant presented. But I would, if you don't have a problem with the number, I would recommend just sort of a vote that you concur that yes, that condition has been met by establishing that number.
If you got a problem with it, Dennis, I got no problem with putting this off until, because one, it's not on the agenda. And two, if there's an issue with it, I'd rather have it resolved rather than just push the envelope.
Okay.
So that you can call Mike, Mike up personally and talk to him about it.
I just think what he's just saying, especially when you look at the difference, when I looked up the numbers tonight before I came here, this significant difference. If something ever went wrong, that the amount of money that's listed there isn't going to finish the work, isn't going to do the work.
I am not qualified to tell you if the number is correct or not.
And I just looked on the DOT website based on trying to get close to quantities that they listed and stuff like that, and the price per cubic yard and square yard and all that wasn't even close.
So my motion would be to postpone accepting this to the next meeting when you have a chance to talk to Mr. McNally.
So I can shoot Mike over KV an email and ask if, in his opinion, do they match, I'll say, industry standards and current DOT rates that they're seeing for similar-sized projects?
Do you need a second?
Yep.
A second then.
Further discussion?
So that will be postponed to the 22nd?
Yes.
Dennis, the landscaping too is, that's hard. I don't know how that can happen because DOT, I don't know where you compare stuff like that without going.
We, we could make an amendment to that, to where the board gives Dennis approval after talking with Mike McNally if the.
I would not.
Figures are right, that the board gives him permission to go ahead to finalize it and put it.
I would not give that blanket of authorization.
Okay, that's fine.
Not the, not trust Dennis, but just doing it all.
Because he's the chair.
I think that speaking with Mike McNally is fine, but I wouldn't give him authorization. Just blanket to do that, that can get cotton problems down the line potentially.
Okay, so I'm actually not going to be here, but I will relay the information to the board.
Yeah, you could just send an email.
That's fine, yeah.
To Jim that gets distributed.
And it only gets pushed off to the next meeting.
Right. And we just got this, just on the record.
Agenda, so it's not like anybody's getting hurt.
It was literally in tonight's email.
Yeah. We got it at 9:30 this morning.
I think it's proven.
Barbara, do you have any comments?
I do not. Do you need a second?
Uh, no, Jim Ryan seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristas?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And next is, Jen is going to give an update on the housing.
All right, I'm gonna try and keep this as painless as possible. What, so, and Barbara, I'll project this in just a second. What you have before you is the summary of the housing survey we did last fall. You have seen this before. It has just been a little while, so I wanted to do a quick refresher. Just share this for Barbara. So when we did the housing survey, we did not get huge, huge numbers. Thought we got over 100. This has been, some of the findings that we got from the survey kind of repeated with some other surveys that had been done in town, including your master plan survey, the age-friendly communities project my office worked on with Newton last year. So I'm gonna go through what the housing survey, like the major findings were, because what I want to talk to you about is really the goals of the housing master plan chapter. And that's, I need your input. That's sort of the last piece of the master plan chapter that I need some direct feedback from you, so I'm just gonna refresh this really quick. And the major findings that we got from the housing survey, when we're talking about housing diversity and housing of all types. People really felt strongly that for new housing, or if there was going to be denser housing, where it was located was really important to them. There wasn't a real strong preference in a key part of town. You'll see the map on the right-hand side of this, kind of gives in the green where people generally felt a little more density might be okay. Those are generally places that already have higher density than your underlying zoning allows. Places where people were okay with a little bit more density, or it might be okay depending on what it looked like, are in blue. And where people really did not want more density was in red. There's not a real great rhyme or reason to it, other than the blue is near Sergeant Woods, and that's already fairly dense for just the type of housing it is. So location is key, so we have to be, if we make any housing regulation modifications, really clear as to where that density might apply when trying to have a discussion with people about whether to allow density increases in certain areas, or if it's a little bit more sporadic. Protecting natural resources, really strong priority. I can do a housing survey anywhere in New Hampshire. Protecting natural resources will almost always be the number one concern. It's not the people, it's the bunnies. But that's really important, because we have to have a good natural resources, good water quality, open space to maintain the look and feel of our community, but also our basic needs of water. Why do people want to live in Newton or like living in Newton? Well, it's its rural characteristics. You guys have a lot of open space. You have some really beautiful water resources. You have a lot of historic architectural interests in town. People really like that atmosphere. It's why they move here. You're kind of a rural town, near some denser areas, particularly in northern Mass. When we started talking about affordable housing and workforce housing, which have definitions, I will highlight that they are not low-income housing explicitly, although low-income housing is part of affordable housing. There were polarizing comments. Some people said, more housing, more housing, more housing, we need it. Other people said, hell, no. And there was a fair bit in between. Very common reaction in any town I've done this kind of work in. So having sensitivity to making sure that when you're talking about housing and affordable housing, that people really understand what that means, has to be part of the conversation if you're gonna make a regulation change related to this. People had mixed opinions about rental opportunities. People thought that rental units sometimes did not bring desirable quantity or qualities to a town. Fair bit of people were kind of neutral on the topic. Other people felt that there needed to be more rental opportunities. There was also a mixture of opinion about housing opportunities for all ages. Newton actually does have a fairly high percentage of 55-plus development compared to your overall housing stock.
Yep.
It's not a bad thing. A lot of communities in the past 20 to 30 years have really promoted age-restricted housing, because you get the tax benefit without having the tax impact on the schools. That's been one of the reasons it's been such a big seller in a lot of New Hampshire communities. I think Newton simply has a higher percentage of 55-plus because of your proximity to Massachusetts. So we did, we've got this document. We did a kind of a spectrum of what people actually said as a result of the survey, from no more housing, to maybe some housing, to more housing is needed. Most people are okay with a little bit of housing. They just don't want it to detract from why they choose to live in Newton. And they don't want it to increase their taxes, is the general sentiment.
Would you just say a second?
And, and they don't want it to increase their taxes, or have a negative tax impact if there is more housing. All right, that's my kind of five-second recap of the survey to go into the housing goals. But does anybody have any questions at this point?
Seven minutes.
In seven minutes? All right. I'm doing my best. All right, I'm gonna switch what I'm sharing, so hold on one second. All right, we have a whole bunch of background information about housing in Newton. It's the statistics that basically play out. You're getting older, you have a lot of open space, you are mainly single-family homes, you do have a fairly large percentage of 55-plus. Home sizes are getting smaller. That means there are less people living in each household than there were 10, 20, 30 years ago.
Is that in Newton, or is that?
That is Newton, but that is also Rockingham County, and it is also New Hampshire. So it's got a lot of those statistics. I'm not gonna go through those right now. I've gone through them with you a couple of times. We can reevaluate them again, but that's the basic statistics of the housing stock in Newton. What I have done is taken the previous goals or recommendations from previous master plan chapters, and then pulling from your more recently updated chapters, what has Newton said about housing? That's kind of the trajectory to where you then get to. What are the goals for Newton's housing going forward? So in 1999, addressing multifamily housing, allowing a little bit more of it was addressed, really trying to promote open space development. You guys have a cluster subdivision. It's been utilized. You've seen some of those in the past couple of years. You acknowledge manufactured housing. Manufactured housing in the past 30 years has changed significantly as to what does that mean? You've allowed more expansion of home occupation. You wanted to have more public awareness about zoning. You wanted to have more cluster zoning. I will say, cluster zoning, open space zoning, and conservation zoning are all the same thing, with the idea of having housing on a small part of a big lot, and then keeping the rest in a natural state. The big concern was really water supply. How is any future housing? Because during 1999, there was a lot of housing development going on around the state, Newton being part of that, so there was a big rush to develop a lot. Well, concerns about where is the water gonna come from? Newton to date hasn't had extensive issues with water, other than we've had droughts in the past 30 years periodically, that, yes, some wells have gone dry. There are some contamination that have happened in wells around the state and this part of the state in particular, but Newton doesn't have any particularly egregious actions that have happened that are uncommon. All right, coming back into the past couple of years, we redid your vision chapter back in 2021. The vision statement says, and I am gonna read this, "The town of Newton is primarily a residential community that would like to encourage land use such as agriculture, single-family homes, local businesses, and conservation and protection of natural resources." It goes on to talk about rural character and facilitating housing options that support the needs of the community. What that sort of says is that you want to protect that single-family housing. That's not a bad thing, but I don't think that that tells the whole housing story when you get into the second discussion about having housing opportunity that supports the needs of the community. That got pulled out a lot because of the age-friendly communities work that was done, and some of the resources that an aging population really needs, especially in a rural community, but also the shifting in some of your housing stock getting older, and some of the sizing of your housing, as far as household size, not household building size themselves. So one of the goals from that vision statement was really to review the zoning ordinance to protect things like your water resources and your natural resources, and to examine the other rural communities to see how lot sizing allowance have impacted that community. Now, we haven't gone through that effort. That's actually can be a very big undertaking, but lot sizing does not always have to be the standard lot size. And you guys used soil-based lot sizing, so you actually use a more environmentally based standard for your lot sizing to ensure that lots can support septic systems. That's what soil-based lot sizing really does. Many communities just require two, or three, or four acres as their standard lot sizing. Yours varies from about an acre to an acre and a half, depending on the soils. It can be a little bit bigger or smaller, depending. So taking that into mind, we got on to the 2023 land use chapter. This had one very specific housing recommendation, which was update the housing chapter. So we can cross that off. We're, we're working on that, so yay, planning board! Sorry, I'm a little punchy tonight. Maybe it's the lack of an audience. But the age-friendly communities, which was really targeted at what does Newton need for its, not just senior residents, but for all residents to be able to age in place? What services are people looking for? What assistance might they be looking for? What are their needs and what are their desires? There was a lot coming up about the tax impact on elderly and age-restricted. You know, what does that mean? What is the income in Newton? What does it take to be able to afford a home in Newton? Well, if anybody's paid attention to the news, housing prices have increased dramatically over the past 5, 10, 15 years. So that impacts who is able to live in Newton. Even if they bought their home 5, 10, 15, 20, 30, 40 years ago, can they still afford to live here? We have also, and this is actually part of the land use audit that I mentioned at our last meeting, gone through the New Hampshire Housing Toolbox to see what are the regulation changes you could potentially consider when you are trying to increase housing diversity. That does not mean only affordable housing. It means increasing diversity of housing of all types, from, I'll say, small houses to multifamily potentially, to mixed use, to lower density, to higher density. What, what of your housing stock is kind of not available that would still fit the characteristics of the town without negatively compromising those characteristics? All right, that was my long-winded way of getting to this. Got a couple of suggested goals. This is not, doesn't have to be the final language, but it's more of language to work off of. But number one being, support a variety of residential housing options to accommodate all generations, income levels, and household structures, including housing to foster aging in place. Newton's getting older. I mean, we're all getting older, but Newton is getting older. Well, people being able to stay in their homes is part of housing diversity, but allowing people to maybe downsize, if that's their desire, is part of housing diversity. Letting someone size up is part of housing diversity. So it's really that ramp up of housing that you might deem, going from, you know, becoming an adult, starting a family, to then having adult children move out, to then maybe wanting less responsibility for household maintenance, to maybe moving into an assisted living or senior care. If that's sort of a typical trajectory. It's not everybody's trajectory, but it's a typical trajectory.
It's typical, but these days is a lot of, from what I understand, and my wife and I are doing it now with my mother, to where she's not going into a nursing home like Jim did with his mother. We have our mother now living with us because of the cost is just, it's crazy. And the better care that the elderly receive, being at home with their loved ones and their family. So a lot of people are tending to do that these days, as well as their children aren't moving out. We were blessed enough that we got the two family, so a lot of families that kids can't afford a new house, so they're staying and living at home. So that's something that, like we talked about, would be feasible for some of these older homes that could possibly be divided up into, what do we want to say, apartments or like condos or whatever?
You could just say multi-unit.
Yeah, multifamily unit.
With in-law attachments and stuff, that's exactly what he's talking about, too.
So housing flexibility is part of housing diversity.
Right.
Kind of getting at both sides of the, the multi-generational options. You know, there are some people who maybe they can afford their, their single-family home, and then, you know, as they've gotten older, their income perhaps decreases. Well, they might want to put an accessory dwelling onto their unit to be able to better afford their mortgage in some cases.
We have no stipulation that accessory dwelling units have to be, I'll say, owner-occupied?
Under, so, under state law, any place that allows single-family homes has to allow an accessory dwelling, but it can specify that the owner has to occupy one of the units. It doesn't matter which one, though.
And that's what we do in Newton, right?
I see, I, I think that like condexes, like a duplex side-by-side.
Mm-hmm.
And, or in condos would give people the opportunity to own, be part of the community, up the revenue stream, your tax stream, pride in ownership, without really hurting property values. I don't know if we would need to zone zoning for duplexes or condos.
So you have small areas of town that do allow duplexes. You have a fair bit of area of town that either historically has had mixed use or multifamily, and that's a lot of some of the older homes that are along the more major roads.
I know a lot of you don't want to see a condo development go in, but a spattering of duplexes is a great way to make a, soften the edge and not have a whole ton of people living in, in a half a mile, you know?
I will say, and I'll get into this a little bit more, but there is a concept called the missing middle, or it's called gentle density. And what that is, is very small sort of incremental, allowing a little bit more housing here or there. It doesn't mean a 10-story, you know, 400-unit.
Right.
Housing complex. It doesn't have to mean that. It can mean a small condo development. It can mean something like Kingsley Corner up the road that has six duplexes, I'm sorry, three duplexes, six units. It can be those small, little developments. It does not have to be these huge developments.
Yeah, and they still have curb appeal, and they, they, they're kind of an upside on a lot of different, you know, ways. There's no infrastructure would even support hundreds of people like that.
That, that's true. I mean, you certainly could have, I don't know, a development of 20 or 30.
Oh, absolutely.
Homes, condexes, detached condos, whatever you want to call them, on a common septic system. There are places in Newton that could support that, but you're not gonna get huge development because you simply don't have the infrastructure.
No.
So part of any zoning regulation we might take has to be very conscientious of you don't have a wastewater treatment plant. You only have a few places in town that are serviced by a public water system. Everybody else is on private well and septic. So it has to balance the infrastructure investment.
Yeah, you'd have to have a monitored or planned growth rate.
Yeah, I mean, it can be accommodated by the development through your existing regulations, by, just by your existing regulation design, kind of has that built in, that you can only build what you can accommodate the infrastructure for. That's why you don't see really, really rapid growth. But just to come back to this, does anybody have a concern about this goal? Even if, small wording tweaks we can work on, but the general sentiment of this goal? I can make this bigger, too, if that's easier.
Dang, I'm getting old.
Jen, could, this is, this is Barbara, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I don't have any concerns with, you know, what you're talking about, but wouldn't we have to go ahead and change some of our zoning because, like, where you can have duplexes and whatever? There are only certain areas in town that are earmarked to be able to do that. Wouldn't we have to change our zoning for that, then?
So to actually implement this goal, it could take actually changing your zoning. That could be one of the actions, and that obviously requires further discussion as to the detail, devils in the detail of that kind of a decision. But if the overall goal is to simply support a variety of housing, you know, allowing duplexes in more places in town, might be one of those simple actions to consider. So the short answer to your question is yes, you might have to change the zoning. It doesn't all have to be. It doesn't all have to be the zoning, though.
Thanks.
Yeah, but you'd have to worry about having one whole day board of all triplexes and duplexes. Whereas if you could, if you could attach it to a percentage of homes in the area, for every hundred houses in this mile, you could put six, three duplexes in.
It is possible to write regulations that kind of get at that. It is very hard to administer. It is also very hard to convince property owners that you are not infringing upon their rights to do something.
So it'd have to be, this whole area is going to be duplexes or one families?
Yeah.
Or triplexes or whatever the restriction was, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just going to use that as an example because of how we're talking about. But if you decided that you might allow, I'll say, the state roads in Newton, all along the state roads in Newton, suddenly where it's only allowed single-family right now, duplexes are allowed. It does not mean that every house is going to get turned into a duplex. It does not mean that the single-family homes are going to get torn down and replaced. But it might be something that you want to monitor over a few years to see if, how that might be starting to play out. You don't go into it using it as an experiment, but you do go into it smaller chunks at a time before you say, well, duplexes are just maybe allowed everywhere in Newton. You can do that incremental.
Or new construction duplex. That way, it requires an empty lot in order to do it, or requires a house to come down. You couldn't take your house and turn it into a duplex.
Yeah, there are certainly subsidies to regulations you can build in that sort of.
Because you're going to be up against a lot of pushback from neighbors.
Potentially, yeah. All right. Am I okay to move on to the next goal? There's, there's not 20 of them, I promise. The next one is really getting at that natural resource aspect of ensuring that new housing development does not overburden Newton's drinking water supply or put undue strain on the town's natural resources. So this kind of, this also by default covers septic, but do you have enough space to supply enough water to any new housing development? So larger developments have to have public water systems that are monitored by DES. They have a well radius, they have pump tests, there are certain parameters. Single-family houses, duplexes only require a 75-foot well radius under state regulation. So you put in your well, there's no pump test. It's just, you put the well in 75 feet, you can't have your septic system within that 75 feet. It has to all be on your property. Are there places in town where you don't want more, I'll say, straws in the ground? Because there are already small lots. The well radiuses are already overlapping each other. And that, that's very common in historic development. Are there places you don't want to increase that density because of that concern? Because you're all on private wells? They could even all be private shallow dug wells. Starts to get into a drought, that can cause an issue. Is the infrastructure capacity even there?
That's the problem, the infrastructure that you're talking about. Because that's the major problem that Newton has with their well water and their groundwater is the fact of the soils. Usually when you dig down, what you're looking for is the granite layer to get into there and then that's where you would find your perfect well. Unfortunately, here in Newton, we don't have a lot of areas that are like that. From talking with the well companies and, and all of that, we have that abundance of clay and then that makes for pool well, pool wells. Because it doesn't allow the water to drain and then we don't have the granite, that, that layer of granite which would form the wells, which helped to hold, keep the water in place. And that's why it doesn't take that much for the, of a drought for a lot of these houses to start going without water. Because if that water's not continually flowing through to get to their well, that's why these wells and these, a lot of the residents are complaining that their go, their wells are going dry. And that's why there's that huge anxiety about putting too many houses together. Because then you start feeding off of those. And what happens is if somebody's drawing too much water, then those veins where that water was coming through start to collapse and then those wells just go dry, period.
So I will say water quantity, which is sort of what we were just talking about, can be a huge issue. The other thing is water quality. Is the water quality, and that can be because there's existing contamination. So just putting a whole new housing development next to someplace that's got a groundwater contamination issue. Does that make sense? So it's good to know where some of those places are and we, we can pull the data. DES has good data, it exists. If you're going to allow more residential or denser residential, is that a good spot to put it because there is good water supply? Or should you just avoid a part of town because the water supply isn't great? Or should you also be considering on what you're allowing that is not residential to be near future residential wells, especially if it's going to be denser? So it's a mixture of land use and natural resources, how it impacts housing infrastructure. What it's considering that when you may make a zoning or a land use regulation change, especially a big one, where are we putting things in town? Where does it make sense? You know, the industrial, commercial district. Does it make sense to put a lot of housing in there? And I know 125 has a housing proposal, but that's in the residential district. Does it make sense in the commercial industrial area to suddenly say, let's allow a lot of housing? Well, some of the uses that you allow in your industrial zone might not be as compatible because of the potential risk. So it's just a part of that consideration as to big changes, you got to look at the big impacts. Smaller changes because they just are slower in nature, probably less of a concern. So do folks have thoughts on this goal? Do you want to keep it? Do you want to tweak it? Does it give anybody heartburn?
We talking about two or three?
Two.
Okay. I don't like the word ensure, but that's just me. It's by the way, legal cap. Promote.
Okay. Guide.
Guide.
Yeah.
I will say that any zoning change we make related to residential housing or housing at all, it has probably a 10% to 20% impact on where housing actually goes. It, what really dictates more housing or different housing is interest rates. So we can make some
Interest rate?
Interest rates. Can someone afford to build something? Even if it's a private, single-family home or is it a large development? If the interest rate's really high, you see just in general, a lot less housing.
That's what's happening right now.
That is what's happening right now, so we can make change.
But it's temporary, interest rates are fluctuate.
That's true. All right.
Jen?
Yes?
Jen, this is Barbara. Did, did I hear you say that there are certain areas in town where we might not want to recommend more denser housing? And you, you know by soil type where those are? Did I hear you say that?
It's not explicitly soil type, although that could play in. It's where you might have issues with water resources to begin with. Places you might have like contamination from previous land uses or where there may be issues from other areas that you might just not want to put more housing.
Or proximity to contamination or something. So there's hotspots around?
Yep, there are hotspots in every town.
Okay, thank you.
Old gas stations or whatever.
Yep, that type of thing can certainly be.
There could have been something 30 years ago.
Junkyard.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Even cow pastures.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Honestly, apple orchards from the 30s, they sprayed arsenic on the apples.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
River beds?
Yep.
What did they put on the apples?
Arsenic.
Holy moly. Oh, to kill bugs?
Yeah, it was a pesticide.
Didn't the DES find something in like Country Pond? It's like PFCs or something like that.
There are, I don't recall offhand if there are PFAS in Country Pond, but it wouldn't shock me if there are.
If you look, you'll find it.
Yeah.
What's it called? PFAS. Petro.
I don't, I'm not going to even try.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
Yes.
Well, there's what, mercury in it right now?
Yeah, mercury is from power plants out west. I will say, and this is just a side note because we're talking about water, we did get the grant to do the aquifer protection zoning work for this coming fall. Part of that effort will be us updating maps of contaminations where there are hotspots. So that, that can actually inform some of these housing discussions, even though that's not the intent of that specific project.
Good information.
Yeah.
You can treat for anything.
Just depends on how much you're willing to spend.
It's only money, right? You spent a boatload of peas to treat for PFAS.
Yep.
From the firefighters.
Yeah.
All right. Are we good to move on?
Yeah.
All right. And I'll send these out so you can think about them far. This is just, I need, I needed a straight face test feedback that I wasn't out in left field. All right, goal number three is to guide new housing. Hey, look, we used the word guide. To areas more suitable for residential development in order to minimize conflict with commercial and recreational uses. This seemed a very appropriate one for Newton. Given that a lot of your industrial, commercial areas are surrounded by residential areas. Whether that residential has been developed or not, if they are currently zoned to allow residential. So as you develop far further, especially near those areas, you might see increased conflict if you don't have regulations in place that really try to minimize it. The buffer in between the residential districts and the commercial industrial districts have been a discussion with Newton for as long as I have worked with you. What is enough? What is too much? Is it really impacting the properties on one side of the line or the other? And in what way? So really trying to guide it and have regulations that minimize that conflict. And sometimes that can be that you're allowing mixed use in some places. You already do that through your village district zoning, which hasn't been strongly utilized, but you do have that option in parts of town. So that's sort of part of that discussion. Thoughts?
Can we add resources to that, like environmental resources?
We could.
Did you do, did you not include it on purpose?
I think it was related to just separate it out from two and three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Recreational uses kind of gets into that with like trail use and the human aspect of using the natural resources and the open space. I mean, there's no, we could combine these if you wanted to into one goal, if that's easier. It was more to just, to some extent, compartmentalize them a little. For now, we're okay? Barbara, did you have any?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
All right, goal number four. This is in
Could we look at that other one that we just did, goal three? So towards the end of it, conflict with commercial karma, recreational karma, and conservation.
I'm, I'm okay adding that if people are.
Didn't you address that earlier?
Well, I mean, it is sort of captured in here, but this is more of the natural resources.
More directed toward water, I guess.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not a
It does not.
But I would call this out as, as conservation land, not simply as natural areas. Because conservation land has a whole other
Right.
layer.
So that we'd be able to keep a, a good buffer with our conservation areas.
I will say new housing is often considered desirable if it is near conserv, all housing is considered desirable if it's near conservation areas. Specifically, if they have recreational opportunities, it's considered an additional amenity.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it near it, but within, so that we make sure that there's that safe distance between to maintain it.
I think it addresses a lot of the comments from the public. Yeah, would lower anxiety.
All right.
How many goals do we have?
Five?
Okay.
We're on four.
Okay.
I told you this wasn't super terrible.
Wasn't torturing.
All right. Goal four, enforce existing town regulations related to junkyards, unregistered vehicles, building codes, and continue to upkeep Newton's housing stock. Basically, don't let things get worse. Let's enforce the rules we have. Was kind of the basic sentiment. So this is probably the one that requires the least amount of action of the planning board, but a whole lot of action of some other departments and boards in town.
Already in action.
Which is good. I think you should get credit. I don't think it's a bad goal to like, to keep it top of mind, but maybe using the word enforce, maybe it should be continue to enforce.
Right, because that sounds like we're not doing any
And I don't want it to sound like that, so continuing, continue to.
So you're referring to a place turning into somebody's home? They start collecting stuff and it turns into a
On my way home, I passed at least two yards where there's between 15 and 20 vehicles of varying condition, just sitting on the front lawn.
Well, we already have an ordinance about having everything registered, right?
Yep, you have, you have a junkyard. Orders.
No, I'm saying you can only have one vehicle unregistered?
Yep.
That's from the state.
The state is two. Newton is one.
When I moved here, we had, somebody went before the board and I thought it made it through.
Yeah, no, it did. You could, Newton's law on junkyards is slightly stricter than the states.
Right. Well, even just private residents with multiple vehicles in their driveway, they were stepping it up on that.
No, correct, that's, that's exactly what we're referring to. So if you have either one vehicle or the accumulated parts for one vehicle, then that can be considered a junkyard. Now, if it's housed in a garage, that, that's a different situation.
The last town that I lived in in the mid 90s, and that guy was a nice guy, he started, all of a sudden, there's tires that started showing up in his yard. Well, it turned into about an acre of a mountain of tires and eventually caught on fire.
Oh, man, those don't go out.
No, it was pretty bad. House burnt down, everything went, but I, you know, everybody saw it, they didn't, nobody probably didn't know. Some things like that.
So some of this is a code enforcement type issue. Some of it, and this can be taken a lot of ways, is just asking people to take basic care of their homes or their properties. That is harder to do, but there can be a lot of negative consequences if people aren't doing some basic things. We'll say like, you know, having lots of car parts out in their yard. Well, there could be oils and there could be other liquids in there that are not good for the environment. You could have people dumping things that are illegal. So some of it's an outreach and education component that could be put into this and would reflect this goal. It's, that's a hard thing for a town to do. You're not going to have standards for front yards probably in Newton and make sure everybody has green grass in it's mode, you know, exactly this stuff. You're probably not going to have that.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's asking for that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, that would be a very extreme
The junkyards, though.
Yeah. Well, if it affects a butter's value, probably value, it should automatically
It affects lots of things, safety.
Yep.
Appeal.
Curb appeal, yeah, that's probably value.
So are we okay with this goal? I did add the word continue.
Yep.
Continue, yeah.
Continue to enforce.
So we're not, and we have to be careful about sounding like, you know, overreach, but it sounds like putting continue in there makes it seem a little less. Do we want to remove unregistered vehicles and just keep junkyards? Less.
That's perfectly fine with me.
Is there a town employee or whatever that polices this?
Um, you do have a code enforcement officer whose job it would be, um, as a representative of the select board to enforce such things. But, one person can't enforce every single code on every single property in town, so sometimes it is a prioritization.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, so if you amass a couple of vehicles unregistered, that comes under the junkyard law, right?
Yep.
So based on that, we want to remove unregistered vehicles?
Well, I would. I think that's more applicable than the word junkyard.
I was gonna say, I think the unregistered vehicles actually really spells it out because I see that a lot.
Because people are gonna think junkyard, oh, I don't have a junkyard, I just have four cows with no plates on them, you know? I see both sides, yeah.
Why don't, why don't we keep it for now?
Yeah, leave it there, it covers everything, yeah.
Um, because, I'll get to this in a minute, we are gonna have a public presentation of all of this.
Yeah.
We will invite people, people that took the survey and signed up, we'll get an email that we are going to have this. You know?
And last time, that speci-, the unregistered vehicle portion came up for a warrant article. I forget when this was.
It was like twenty fifteen?
We did have people come to the meeting and express.
It got pretty heated. I just said, come to town.
Yeah, at that point, there was a citizen's petition that was submitted that was the opposite of what the planning board had put forth.
I think somebody was trying to get permission to.
Supercede or to have in excess of what the state allowed.
I was gonna say, I mean, this is a state regulation, not a.
Um, it, so it's, Newton has a stricter regulation than the state. Newton, you can have one, the state in general, you can have two.
Two vehicles.
Okay.
That was during the deliberative session, that's what.
To be honest with you, even two doesn't, as long as they're not an eyesore in the middle of the front yard with four foot of grass around them and, you know. I think most people will probably be left alone.
It's usually the more visible ones that are causing the issue.
Yes, exactly. If it's beside your garage or behind your garage or behind the barn or you're still mowing the grass, you know. It looks like you have a plan for it, like it could drive, it's just a seasonal vehicle, you'd probably be left alone.
Like car that I took here today.
Exactly.
It hasn't been registered since September.
Exactly.
Or November. I haven't been driving it.
Saving money.
It was off the road.
Alright. So are we good? Good with this one for now?
It's not junk.
Right. It's just not registered.
Right. It's expensive.
Seasonal.
But I like salt on it.
Exactly.
But that, I mean, technically, you're still not violating it.
No, I have one, but I guess you could have three nice cars sitting outside.
If it's registered.
It's like a thousand bucks.
You have three German luxury cars.
Alright, you guys are getting silly on me, so I'm gonna move on.
That's fine.
We can come back to it if we need to. Alright. This is. The loftiest of these goals. But.
Should've did this one first.
I like that word.
But, the way you design neighborhoods or streets or areas for residential, as they might be in proximity to Greenie Park. Rail trails, walking trails, other places. Impact how people feel about where they live. So, fostering a sense of community and connectivity in residential neighborhoods through thoughtful site design. And provision of safe walking routes and enforcement of speed limits. So some of that, the planning board could have oversight of. Obviously, the speed limits is something that is a select board and police department. Issue. But this does not, this is not solely a planning board document.
This is a thoughtful site design for development.
Or for having more housing near existing routes can also be a part of it. So making sure that driveways are safe, you know, if it might be applicable sidewalks, if you had Sergeant Woods expand. How does that connect to the existing development or other neighboring properties?
Yeah.
Question on that.
Yep.
So, I guess it'd be kind of similar to what you were mentioning, um, earlier on kind of like the stipulations of how these developments are, are put in place. So for something like this, I mean, there's only one Greenie Park in Newton, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, you know. To be able to walk to that, you gotta live relative, you know, within a couple miles, right?
Sure.
Otherwise, you're not doing that. What is like, is there something we can do where, you know, if X amount of density is added to a certain area of our town? It requires a, you know, a baseball field, a soccer field, a X, Y, Z.
So there are a couple of ways to do that, and you've actually seen that with some of your recent applications. Um, you can require recreational areas if you were to have a subdivision. And a couple of lots in an open space area, okay, X amount of area has to be for recreational purposes. You can require any existing trail networks that the development provide. Public access via an easement and development of a trail to connect the new development to an existing trail system. Um, you can leave space open for a future access road if there might be a connection that could be made in the future. To allow that future development without necessarily making a, a particular landowner. Develop farther than they are choosing to, but you're just allowing for it. With planned communities, you can require things like clubhouse or pickleball courts, um. So, yes, there are ways of incorporating, it ends up typically being very subtle.
Right.
Things, but it's having those provisions and it's often just small modifications to existing regulations. And in some cases, you already have them. To allow for that.
Yep.
I have another question. For townwide speed limits unless otherwise posted, is that a planning exercise? I'm gonna, Amesbury, twenty-five miles an hour unless.
Townwide.
Yeah, townwide.
So it is not a planning board item, it is a select board item. Towns can choose to within, set their speed limits, but you can't set it below twenty-five miles per hour. Except for seasonally, you can have it be lower than twenty-five miles per hour.
It's fifteen in Marco Road.
Which one?
Down by Country Pond, it's fifteen miles per hour.
Amesbury?
No, in Newton.
Nope. Oh, is it the turf road going to the pond?
No, it's paved.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not gonna dive into that too far then.
Okay. I like it.
No, 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 I mean.
I don't think you could get me. Twenty would be head hard.
Now, how many or anything that's developed on the state roads?
It's not.
The state, the state sets the speed limit.
Would impact fees be part of that?
Well, I'm sorry, can you say that?
Impact fees?
Um, it depends on if you're talking about like, could you use impact fees to say pay for sidewalks? You could, you could do that, you can do impact fees to pay for, um, recreational facilities, which. Could be trail development.
Yep.
It is very unlikely that Newton would be able to use impact fees, given how slowly you're growing. Many of the communities around here that have impact fees simply can't use them because you're not growing at a rate directly attributable. To then use them, it becomes just an accounting exercise, so. I would not go down that route at this point in time. Or strongly advise you not to. You can do off-site mitigation, which is a new, a development causes. Um, a need to add a small, I'm gonna say parking lot to a trailhead. Because that development is taking away the existing ability for someone to park safely along that road. You could have that development help pay for a small gravel parking lot as part of just the normal planning board process. You already have the authority to do that.
Well, those, if you did the impact fees to, for recreational, you would be able to take whatever that you got. For impact fees and you could use that money, say for like Greenie Park, to make improvements to that and to enlarge it. To be able to handle more, a be- a bigger population, right?
Well, so impact fees you can only use, and you have to assign an amount of money as to what that impact would be.
Right.
If a development can specifically be attributable for the need to improve in the capital investments, so Greenie Park in this case. Because of that development. So if you had a hundred new houses come in all at once. Yeah, you could maybe assign an impact fee because Greenie Park is the prime park for the town. We need to add another tennis court.
You have to, you have to supply some odd numbers too, why the impact would be, what the cost is.
And the, this.
Going through that now, they, they charged all the marijuana stores all this impact fee and they just took the money and spent it. And they're like, wait a minute, this.
Yeah, it's.
You didn't even spend it on what was impacting, impacted by the marijuana stores. So they're getting sued actually right now.
Who was this?
Havel, city Havel.
Usually impact fees are mainly school related, they can often be, um, transportation related. But even transportation related ones are very difficult to do.
I've seen it for, and it wasn't even an impact fee, it was more of, for Fitzwilliam, New Hampshire, for Soul, or. The developer offered to purchase new fire apparatus because they didn't have the equipment to. Fight a potential fire. But it was actually above local level because it was at the SEC.
Okay.
But it was more like, that's what they asked for.
Yeah.
They, to be honest, facility, they probably didn't even have impact fees because they had never seen a development at that time.
I think that was recommendation from.
Or it was just a way to grease the skids.
Yeah, the, probably.
I mean, that type of, I will say, negotiation. Can happen without establishing impact fees.
In good faith.
That's at the board of selectmen level, correct?
Uh, it depends on what it is. If it's a true off-site mitigation, then it's planning for it.
Okay.
Um, if it might be something related to town capital expense, um, then it could be a select board.
So if we had a large development in. Mike Pevero, road agent, was like, I need a new piece of plow equipment to handle this, even though we don't have any town vehicles. That would be something during that process.
Yeah, um.
Ten more miles of road, obviously that wouldn't happen.
Or if you had a building.
The gravel road in town.
We need a ladder truck, we can't wait for Amesbury to get here, you know? It burns.
The, the name of the gravel road in town, it's escaping me right now.
Gale Village?
It's half gravel.
Courierville?
Courierville.
Courierville.
When there were some, I think it was six housing units developed off of Courier Road, you may recall that. It became a concern that the construction vehicles were gonna ha- cause a lot of running on the gravel road. Well, I think that they ended up having to pay twenty thousand dollars that got paid to the town. So that Mike could go out at a couple of points and spread the gravel to re- to upgrade, not upgrade the road, but just repair the road. That was an off-site extraction or mitigation. The planning board had full authority to require that. But it, it caused, it was a lot of back and forth in discussion with the road agent.
Well, that was a dig too, because that road turned into a mess.
With some of the construction, yeah. I mean, it's a gravel road, so that's gonna also happen, but.
I think it was more of a state logging than the.
Oh, well, that could have been.
There was also a major one done at the corner of Peaslee Crossing and. Smith Corner Road. Because at one point we had Wilhelmine, Sergeant Woods. I forgot the other.
Candyland.
Developer that went in all approximately at the same time. Those developers had to pay for the reconfiguration of, um, Smith Corner Road intersecting with Peaslee Crossing. Because that many more vehicles utilizing the road would require the turning lanes and what have you.
You were talking about walking routes and stuff like biking is something else, but like 108, I know it's a state road. But you, eight months out of the year, all you see, like from Havel to the Newton Plastow Town Line, the state did the road up. It's got all my shoulders on it, everybody's fine and dandy. And once you get into Newton, all the way up through, bikes are just in the, I mean, lots of them. You see it all, some a lot of people walking. Is there any, and I know the state would obviously controls that, but if there's development, more development and stuff.
So, um.
Is that something that is just strictly goes through the state or?
So the town can certainly advertise and encourage for DOT to widen the shoulders in places that it can be done.
I think I just signed up for that.
Yes, you did. Um, uh, through the Transportation Advisory Committee in my office. The other thing is that towns can choose to put in, to work with the state and the state will put them in sidewalks. The issue is that then the town has to maintain them and plow them. And I, I know we're talking about housing, but we're talking about sidewalk.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of that community and that rural feel and that connectivity. And where are you gonna have future development well? And aging in place, the ability to walk places is huge, so.
Streetlights, you see a lot of people walk.
Black of the streetlights.
One oh eight too, it's scary.
And, you know. I don't really want my ninety-year-old mother walking down 108 to go get a pizza, you know what I mean, so. How are people feeling about this goal? There's a lot that can come under this, that's why I said when it's a little bit lofty, because it can go a million different ways and.
Exactly, it's, it's very broad-based, I think it's fine.
Okay.
I think lofty goals are good.
I am gonna take some of our discussion this evening and put it into some actions, just to sort of get that, those juices flowing. These actions don't have to be exhaustive. Doesn't mean you can't do other things if they're not listed here. But it at least gets the ball rolling.
Right.
Give some direction, give some ideas, lets people know sort of what you're thinking might be some of the first items to tackle. I'm just gonna skip back up to number one though, about the variety of housing options. The land use audit that I kind of went through at the last time, that gives you a framework of a lot of different options you could change with your regulations. That's gonna be the number one action, is to review the actions outlined in that report to identify what might be. A good fit for Newton. You're not gonna do all of them at once, but you might pick one or two. So that segues me into my next part of this, is that I would like to come back at the first May meeting. Give you the full draft master plan, we're gonna go through the audit. Because I would like to have the public information session on that, and you, the only thing you have to adopt is the master plan, but you should, you have to have a public outreach event for the grant that is paying for all of this work. Possibly the second meeting in May. And then if we decide to move forward with the master plan, that would have to have a public hearing, we can do that in June.
That's the twenty-first, so right before Labor Day.
So that would be May fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
And May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth is after Memorial Day.
Yes, it is the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
That's the day to have the meeting?
That would be, that would, when I'd be, I would like to have the public information session for both documents, just because they play into each other so much. And we're not gonna get people to come out twice to talk about this.
No. So you wanna do that on what, the twenty-eighth?
Yep. And I would like on the fourteenth, just to do one last review with you guys.
So then what comes after that?
What comes after that? Well, the master plan gets adopted. We have to have a public hearing, um, but assuming that all happens. Then we need to start working on some items. Now, if it's a zoning related item. There is a grant opportunity to continue this work through the same granting source that is paying for this phase of it. Those applications have not come out yet, but it's gonna come in the next couple of weeks if you're interested in applying to continue to do housing work. That would be working on maybe a couple of small regulations. It could be working on one or two bigger regulations. That, at this point, I just need you to kind of think about it, because we don't need to apply quite yet. That work probably wouldn't start until midsummer.
So then what would we do at that point, like form committees or whatever? Get people to go out and, and start assessing areas that could be rezoned and, and start really identifying some areas?
So I would start working with you or a subset of you to guide some of that conversation. Because I have some of that data in my own office, um, and to give you some ideas, but it would start to become a dialogue that we would have and it might require pulling in other folks as well. but it would start to become a dialogue that we would have, and it might require pulling in other folks as well.
And that would be like end of the summer, fall?
That would be starting in the summer, fall. We might be able to get small zoning things in for March 2025. Anything bigger, it kind of depends on how, I'll say controversial that might be.
Yes, starting small and simple might be the way anyway. Once you realize that, eh, it's not a huge impact, it's really not gonna kill us, they might be more.
And some of the potential changes are not things that have to go to town meeting. There are things that can be done under site plan and subdivision regulation requirements. So they do have to have.
And those could be, just for example, sorry.
Those can be modifications to, so for any multifamily development, you require a site plan. Well, you can have slightly smaller requirements for smaller site plans. So three to six unit developments, you might have less strict standards than you would for a application that's proposing 100 units.
Now, we're talking about workforce housing.
Nope.
Oh, no?
I mean, it, it can be part of the discussion.
Oh, but it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be.
Oh.
But it, it makes it more palatable or easier for somebody to move forward with that because it reduces the costs.
Yep.
With many obstacles.
Yep, so one of the things that a couple of towns that I'm working with are considering is that under the building code, if you are between, it's either three and 12 or three and nine units for like a small apartment complex.
Yeah.
You can use the International Residential Code instead of the International Building Code, which has slightly less strict requirements. It's still safe for fire suppression and all building codes and egress, but the cost to comply with it is less expensive because it is a smaller structure by its design. So that can make it less expensive to simply build, which is really trying to get towards those smaller units that are typically more palatable to rural communities, and they can fit better because of the infrastructure constraints. So I know that sounds like a little thing, but it can make a difference. Other things that can make a difference in site plan and subdivision are just the fee structure. That can be one of those. I'm not saying you should reduce your fees, but that can be an option for, oh, having a different process if someone is coming in with a cluster subdivision or with a proposal that does include workforce housing. You may increase the density bonuses to allow a little bit more building, but you're also establishing affordable housing under it. So there can be a lot of very subtle things that most typical residents, and I don't mean to say that they shouldn't be paying attention, but they're not gonna understand unless they've been through this process.
Well, I think to encourage workforce housing, you're gonna have to really incentivize it because they're losing money.
Yeah, well, that's the reason for the density bonuses.
Yeah.
Is that you get to build more units so that you can recoup the cost in your market rate units versus the 20% that is typical for the affordable housing percentage.
And that's why the state was throwing money and all that, all those grants that they were giving out.
And some of that has played out, and some of it will never be built.
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna talk about this again the first meeting in May and plan on the info session at the second meeting in May. And then if we need to have, then have the public hearing for the master plan chapter, which might just be the formality, that can happen in June.
When was the last time this town had a master plan?
You currently have a master plan.
When was the last time it was developed?
It's been developed in pieces. Your most recent housing chapter is from 1999.
99, right, okay.
Your vision and your land use are the two most recent.
Yeah. It's part of planning for a town's future. Again, just chug along and, you know, here's, you put here, but, you know, you gotta have some type of oversight.
I will say, when you're thinking about this stuff, 25 years out is sort of what you're planning for, that's your horizon.
Exactly.
But you need to update your document ideally every 10 years, or at least sections every 10 years.
Right.
So. So as you're thinking of it, think of where will you be in 25 years and what will your housing needs be, so.
99, I couldn't drive yet.
25 years.
Really?
Damn.
Are we meeting on, on the 23rd of April?
You might be meeting, however, I will not be here.
You're in Disney World, right?
I am in Disney World, so.
What?
I know, I'll bring you back some mirrors.
Go to Hogwarts, it's wrong, depends on what's on the agenda.
I'm also gonna be out of town. I'm not in Disney World, though.
Presently, there are no applications for that meeting. However, there definitely will be a NEBRA bill that will need to be paid. Although, I'm gonna contribute finally, got the address right, I guess I got the first bill from North of Boston Media this year. So it's scary having.
Jim also probably wants to get paid.
Yes, we'll be billing for the housing work, but I actually have something on the advertising in the paper. You actually no longer have to do that.
When did they change that?
2022?
I was hoping you were gonna say like 1997.
So I'll, I can, I can bring the specifics for you, but it, it allows it as long as your own procedures. So we might have to change Newton's planning board procedures. Allow for the posting on the website, you still have to post in two public places in town. Allows for posting on the website, then you don't have to post in the paper. You still have to notify a butters.
Yeah.
Like, that will avoid some of that cost.
Can we make that as an action item so we can check that, like, goal completed?
I've already written it down because that's, I can tell you right now, that your rules of procedure do require that it be advertised in a newspaper of.
General circulation?
Yeah.
So that'll be on the next.
However, that is something that the board can. Because it's a rule, it's in the rules of procedure, that's something the board can change.
Modify.
After a public hearing. One thing I will warn you is because of the lightness of our budget, if you're going to have a public hearing, quite honestly, you need to wait until you've got, you're doing the master plan, because we only have, there's only money in the budget for not even one ad anymore. So just the tightness of the budget is.
How much is it to advertise?
It's about $188.
About.
I don't think that there's any harm in waiting until you do the master plan, chapter, public hearing, if there's no immediate.
Have one public meeting.
Yeah, advertise once for both items.
You may have a few applications that come in, but.
We are running lean, huh?
I think, well, we're running on historical budgets, I was just looking at Bob to give him a hard time. We haven't really, there's been a few times when we need to, needed to post publicly on the agenda. That's what, we just haven't been using that money, so we took it out. Can we add that next time? Yes, Barbara, sorry.
Dennis, this is Barbara. Do we, do we need to put the change of rules of proceed, procedure on one of the next agendas then to make sure that we get that done?
That's what we were talking about now, we wanna put it on the agenda where we're publicly advertising the updated master plan.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
You have to discuss it prior to that to bring it to a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So I, I will work that all into the schedule.
Yep.
And I will find any places in there that that is a requirement so that I, we make sure that everything.
Change of language, yeah.
I understand what you meant, Barbara, thank you, thanks, Jim. Yeah, that would save, that would make housing more obtainable, too.
It might reduce the cost by a little bit, yes.
Thank you for like accessory dwelling units, maybe it'll stop somebody from the $200. It's, and it can save the board money, too.
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
I am done.
Anybody else?
Negative.
Barbara, you all set? Oh, what?
I'm fine, thank you.
So we need a me, a meeting next, in two weeks to approve the NEBRA.
You'll, you'll just have very simple minutes on the NEBRA. I'm assuming that we, we're not gonna have, you should have had a NEBRA for tonight, but the snowstorm last Thursday kind of wiped things out. Now that I have some major bills that need to be paid, yes, that, that should come before you.
Are you four here next week, in two weeks?
Yeah, my kids are going all out and gone, as long as everything goes to plan, yeah.
Or if you want to take that night off, then that's the chair's call.
Well, it's just delaying the payments for two.
For the NEBRA.
For two weeks.
Is that a deal breaker?
I'm sure that, to give you guys a little bit of respite, I'm sure that North of Boston Media can wait two weeks to get their check.
I'm good either way, I'll be here.
That's complete, that's, the, the chair can make that decision.
It's up to you guys.
Next week and a half.
Doesn't matter to me.
Do you wanna just postpone for two weeks? Have it the May, what was it, the 3rd?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
May 14th.
The 14th.
The, the meeting before that would be.
The 23rd of April.
Oh, we don't have a meeting in the first week? Oh, wow.
No, because the first is on a Wednesday.
Okay, yeah.
Because May 1st falls on a Wednesday.
So it's a month away.
Right, so we'll have, we'll be meeting on the 14th and 28th of next month.
Uh, skip two weeks, two weeks, month away.
I will tell you, this is Barbara, I will tell you I will not be available on May 14th for that meeting.
Okay.
So it would actually be five weeks from today.
It sounds like if you have four people that are available, you may be able to get some business out of the way and then go home for an early night.
Yeah, we can't, I was gonna say.
That works.
We can't be backers like that. Might as well just have a quick meeting and get done what we need to do.
I'll be here.
Perfect.
Four people is all we need?
Four people.
Yep.
In person.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
So that would be what date?
May 14th.
Catcher?
No.
No, April 23rd.
Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, this month.
Yeah, because then it's, then it's three weeks after that. That's the Tuesday? That's, that's vacation week for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking.
So the 23rd.
But I know your kids are, could be on a different schedule.
No, it's just that Wednesday, Thursday.
That'll be a quick meeting, we'll just be in and out of here.
Yep.
In about 20 minutes.
Yep. Okay. Adjourned at 8:24.